Okay, let's begin the Brownborough Planning Commission meeting of November 6th. Five minutes past six. Let's start off with, do I need to give any sort of intro for the course of the meeting? I don't know, everyone has the agenda and has seen it, so I'll just get right into the items. Reviewing the minutes of October 2nd.
Will we be ratified as a document?
Yeah, we can't do that.
You can't vote on, we can't do the minutes.
Right.
Thanks.
Okay, announcements, thanks. We just talked about that process, didn't we? Okay, announcements, I shared a memo just saying that with the, geez, I think it was with the Dummerston zoning amendments. No, the Guilford Town Plan revisions, there was just a few updates, but the public hearing for that actually already passed. I looked through those just few changes, I didn't really think it was worthwhile of, you know, notifying the rest of the commission and for potentially having a non-regularly scheduled meeting to discuss it. But if Dan or Sarah or the public, you know, because they can see all our supporting docs too, feels like any of those things where, you know, I kind of heard on that, then please let me know. But anyway, for the Dummerston zoning amendments, that public hearing is still, there's still some time for that, it's on the 13th. So if anything there caught people's eyes, and I think there's things about landscaping and solar siting, screening, and the third thing. Then we could, well, either discuss it quickly now or just talk to me or Sue after this meeting and then we could potentially schedule a meeting before that 13th to have some official decision and vote made in order to share at that public hearing.
So basically be our support of or commentary on what they're planning to do?
Rephrase the question, sorry?
That would be a statement of support or comments on what they are planning to do, since it's not directly relevant to us.
Right, yeah, being a neighboring town in each of these cases, we, the state rules explicitly, send a notice around to the abutting towns when towns are making a zoning or town plan, proposed change. Yeah, and we could comment in any way we want. We could say this is great, or this is terrible, or we could be more specific in either direction. And we could propose alternatives. And then it's up to, you know, the windmill reach and all.
Yeah, that would be the Dummerston.
It's just up to the town's select boards, right?
Yes, their planning commission.
To hear our comments and be influenced whether or not they are. So commissioners or anyone, if you have any comments on those two aspects of announcements?
I'm a fan of food trucks, I'm glad Dummerston's doing that.
Oh yeah, food trucks in Dummerston, yeah, some zoning change to, I think, accommodate that, right? Or regulate it, let's just say, to be more specific, but general. Okay, I think there's some other announcements, Sue?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that we did receive the neighborhood development area designation, so we expanded the one that's associated with downtown and we have a new one around West Brownborough Village. So Steve worked on that application and did a nice job presenting it to the downtown board and we were successful. So we'll be working on getting that information out. It's one of the benefits is some relaxation of Act 250 in certain situations and also the reduction in state wastewater fees. And so combined, I think, with the zoning changes, it offers some incentives for development.
To the extent development can happen, it's setting us up pretty well.
Exactly, yeah.
For it to happen here and where we want it. Did the state board modify the proposed NDA zone at all or totally accepted 100% as proposed? Yep, okay.
Yeah, they accepted it. They, there was a little, on the Winston Proudie campus, there was one segment where there was a little, what was that, resource area?
Oh, it was a low, low scored habitat block, yeah.
Habitat block?
And it seemed like they were launching into an internal discussion of how to consider weighing that against other public benefits as we were leaving the meeting, so I guess our application sparked a conversation.
Okay, and the habitat block is like synonymous with forest connectivity or?
Yeah, typically, of course.
Has that 1 through 10 score?
I think it does, yeah.
I think this may have been a four or a five.
It's kind of the little plateaued area that is kind of in the corner near Maple and Guilford Street. It's not way out, let's put it that way.
Northwest. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the parcel already has Act 250 jurisdiction and part of that includes conservation restrictions. So I think it was sort of a distinction without a difference.
Okay, any other announcements from anyone? No? Okay, let's move on to the second meeting with local motions, Jonathan Weber. Jonathan has some model bike parking standards that he's prepared and is in our E folder already. And staff has also provided their perspective on this. But of course we'll have Jonathan go first and present in whatever way you'd like. You know, I think most of us have seen what you shared, so need not spend too much time running through the document. But however you'd like to present, and you know, once again, thank you very much for doing this work and coming to these meetings with and to present.
Yeah, I'm really happy to do it and appreciate you all having me here and considering improving Brownborough's regulations for bike parking as part of development. Yeah, knowing that you all have seen and read through the model ordinance, you know, it probably doesn't make much sense for me to talk through it too much, but I can really quickly sort of give a summary of what this regulation seeks to achieve.
Okay.
And the fundamental thing is both short-term bike parking and long-term bike parking. Short-term bike parking generally being for visitors, so folks stopping at a business or residential area for, you know, maybe an hour or less. And then long-term bike parking being, you know, bike parking for employees or folks who live in an apartment building and want to have safe storage for their bike overnight. So it seeks to achieve both long and short-term bike parking that is scaled to the use as well as, you know, sort of the size of the development. So that's provided in sort of this table of bike parking quantities. And these are of course minimums. We also recommend some amenities to go along with the long-term bike parking, such as showers, changing facilities, and lockers for the larger developments. And then we specify rack types that are conforming and non-conforming, especially some key performance standards for those racks, making sure they're on impermeable, you know, maintainable surfaces, providing some performance criteria for the racks to ensure that, you know, whatever gets installed is going to allow people parking their bikes to do so securely and conveniently. And then there's some miscellaneous stuff in terms of, you know, developers providing a payment in lieu if they're not able to meet the bike parking minimums. And their reasoning for not being able to is, makes sense and the town wants to accept that kind of a variance. You know, there's a provision fund to provide a payment in lieu for the bike parking so that the town can build it elsewhere. And then we've got some graphics to support all of that in terms of how bike parking should be laid out to ensure that it's not blocking sidewalks, that folks can park conveniently. And also just showing a conforming and non-conforming racks. So hopefully that's helpful just as a summary to kick this off. And maybe the best next step would be to talk through some of the comments that the planning staff had or some of the thoughts that you all as commissioners.
Well, I know at least I personally have a few, just maybe little clarifying questions that I think could be good to touch on before, like the concerns or modifications and more substantial stuff that might be harder to talk through. I don't know about other commissioners, any clarifying? So for the long-term parking being proposed, being the rationale that that's not for visitors but for residents and employees primarily, what's some, you know, and it would be like overnight parking, for example, how does that apply to employees?
So it doesn't necessarily need to be overnight. It's really just having parking that is, you know, indoors and secured. So as an employee, you know, even on a local motion, I usually bring my bike inside for the day. I don't leave it outside because I don't want to be thinking about, you know, is someone trying to cut through my lock? Is my bike getting wet, exposed to the elements? Is it going to get hit by a snowplow, you know, all that stuff? Also with e-bikes becoming more popular, it's really helpful and important for those bikes to be able to be brought inside so that, you know, the battery, the electrical components aren't sitting out, you know, exposed to the elements all day. Also, if a person with an e-bike can bring their bike inside, it means they can detach their battery from the bike to then charge it. Whereas if your bike is locked up outside, you really don't want to have all those electrical connections exposed to the elements while your battery is detached from your bike. So it's really about providing that secure bike parking that keeps bikes sheltered and really makes people riding bikes feel like they're being treated with dignity and encouraged to keep doing what they're doing, because of course you want more folks biking and fewer folks driving.
Okay. For figure two that shows the example, the permitted types of racks that you're suggesting and the types of racks that should be non-permitted. I'm not too familiar with maybe why you're saying that three of the non-permitted rack types aren't sufficient? The swing arm secured and the monolith and the coat hanger?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Because in some ways those look, you know, pretty similar and interchangeable to the post and ring rack to me. I'm not sure why those are not as good, in your opinion?
Yeah, maybe we can clarify the issues with those a little bit more, we can update this document. So the swing arm secure, you know, there's sort of the fundamentals of a rack, right? You want to have two points of contact with the bike and that's what helps the bike stay stable. You want to have it be easy to lock the frame of the bike and the rear wheel to the rack. And you want the rack to be intuitive. And with the swing arm secured, it's really that last one, the intuitive use that's missing. I think also with that one, just the shape of it poses, I think, some concerns around people walking into it just because of the way it's built. You can imagine a person with low vision who's using a cane, their cane would hit the base of that but not the arm that comes out to the side of it. So that's a bit of an accessibility issue that that one poses. With the coat hanger and the same case with the bollard, the issue with those is that that middle post, it's a little hard to tell, but what the graphic is showing is that middle post is sort of a barbed rounded post. And so that typically results in the bicycle only contacting that one point on the rack. So the bike tends to sort of roll back and forth and not be secure. And the issue with the monolith is the points of contact are so close together and they are not sort of parallel to the length of the bikes, they don't stabilize the bike the way that the hoop rack, the inverted U rack, and the post and ring rack do. The inverted U rack is really sort of the standard, that's what most places are using. The post and ring rack is a nice option because it allows for parking meters to be retrofitted as bike racks, which a lot of municipalities have been doing to add some bike parking on the cheap.
Okay. For E, that letter E and number two, the page right after that, I wasn't too clear. You know, see how number one starts with the letter or? That kind of threw me off. And so is it just number one that has a typo or was there some misordering of those three points?
Yeah, so what that's saying is, you sort of read it as a sentence starting from number two. So short-term bicycle parking shall, or sorry, sorry, short-term bicycle parking or assigned leading thereto shall be visible from the main entrance of the structure facility. So the short-term itself or assigned leading to it.
This is a question maybe both for you Jonathan and staff. For G3 where it proposes the mitigation funds? If development can't or, you know, arguably can't put in the requirements and they have to, then it's proposing that they contribute to a fund for public bicycle infrastructure? Is that something that you've seen Jonathan in existence in other municipalities? And for staff, I'm wondering, I mean, you guys aren't the finance department, but is this something that the town government could actually administer?
Yeah, so Burlington does have a similar provision and basically the money goes into the capital fund.
Yeah.
So in the past, I've seen this done for sidewalks in the town, not successfully. We didn't use it and I think we actually had to return the funds. So it's possible it could be set up, we would just need to work with the town attorney and finance. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, if no other commissioners have questions, I guess we could give the public a chance to just for, well, actually I feel like you're still on your presentation and I think you proposed to look through the, to go through the staff memo and address some of those points, Jonathan?
Whatever you folks would find helpful, I haven't seen the staff memo actually, so I don't know what the questions were there.
Okay.
Sorry about that Jonathan, I thought I had emailed it to you last week, did I not?
That's okay, if you did, I think I missed it.
I mean, I guess I'll say personally, just in general, I think maybe staff should take it away with some of the points in their memo, but I'll just say in general, I agreed with a lot of the points in the memo. And some of them I felt like I could go either way on and a couple I disagree with. But in general, I felt like a lot, a lot in the memo I was in agreement with. So I don't know about you, Lindsay or Dan or Lena? But maybe, maybe Steve and Sue, you can have a little presentation or discussion with how, with your perspective on it, on the standards?
Sure, yeah, so given that some folks haven't seen it, what level of detail do you think we should delve into? Were there any of the specific points that you had thoughts on that you wanted to maybe speak to and dialogue with us maybe?
Sure.
I think maybe hitting the key points.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I thought that your last page that spelled out, you know, seven points and it's titled additional minor edit suggestions? It says additional, but I thought actually everything that was mentioned on the previous pages that was actually suggesting a modification was actually on that page unless I missed something. So you could run through those and then we could just take a minute to discuss each of them.
Sure, so yeah, some of the more minor things that we wanted to flag and make sure that we took care of in the event that this policy were to be adopted or version of it were to be adopted. The first point was just mostly formatting wise that we would need to make sure that we harmonize the language in our existing land use regulations and state statute, other kinds of law and statute that acts on our land use regulations to make sure that there's nothing that contradicts and that it's all harmonized. Primarily, the major thing is that we would need to make sure that we don't have, well, I guess, actually to back up, the B under that first point is that we would want to make sure that we switch up the language that was in the draft policy. Don't know the exact citation, my apologies. It was for who would be determining what the appropriate similar, materially similar use for establishing the ratio would be in the event that something's not listed. And we do have existing language for that, so we would probably just go with what we already have, which is to give that determination to the administrative officer, the zoning administrator. And then C under that particular item would be that it's probably not ideal to have two distinct parking ratio tables that are, or, you know, there's a larger conversation to be had about parking minimums that we've, you know, started to undertake in recent meetings. But to have, ideally if we were going to be having a parking minimum table, to have one for both of these modes that's the same and can just be referred to in one would probably be preferable, but that is of course just staff's take on that. In terms of recommending whether the minimums be requirements, we can't recommend that at the moment. I think that's, you know, in tandem with the larger conversation about parking minimums broadly, given the discussion that we've recently had that we can, you know, get back into a bit to summarize today if preferable. But the spatial and financial impacts of that land use policy don't seem to really pencil, albeit of course bike parking is dramatically less spatially intensive and financially impactful on development. So that bears being said as well, of course.
Steve, before moving on to three, so I just want to get a sense from everyone how it sits with you all hearing just like harmonizing the language with our current land use regs? You know, having it match up with and synchronized with the section 313's parking ratio tables that already exist for vehicles? You know, like Steve was saying, we haven't, we're starting a discussion about modifying the minimum automobile parking. But to some degree, you know, linking them so that we're not two separate tables, but like bicycle parking is interchangeable with an automobile parking? Does that sound reasonable or any thoughts on those points?
I really like the idea of having bicycle parking be an option to reduce the amount of vehicle parking that's required. I think that that not only provides an opportunity for people developing a property to do it at a much lower cost and in a way that supports bicycle infrastructure, but also addresses some of the challenges related to space. When I was living in Portland, Oregon, there were often, you would see places where people had taken over a parking spot, a single parking spot and put in, I can't remember how many it was, but something like, you know, four to six staple racks. So being able to accommodate quite a few more bicycle parking spots in the same amount of space as a single car parking spot, I think gets potentially towards that piece about more distributed bicycle infrastructure as well, especially with regard to the long-term bike parking, which as noted has a much higher cost and spatial impact. So I definitely like the idea of it being a tradable thing.
Yeah, I feel like I'm generally in agreement, except for if we were and it seemed like most of us were leaning at last meeting to getting rid of automobile parking as minimums requirements, then if there's zero of something, of an automobile requirement that traded for bicycle is also zero. However, cars can just park somewhere and they're safe and secure by locking the doors, right? Bicycles aren't that way, they can be picked up. So I feel like it's, you know.
Not necessarily.
With the cars, you mean?
Yeah, people break into hot cars.
No, I know. Yeah, and people break, you know, bike bicycle locks too, so nothing's impenetrable. But there's a locking, you know, thing that's built in to cars, they're self-contained in that way, whereas bicycles don't have that unless they get created with trees and lipoes and stuff. So I do feel like if we do go the way of eliminating automobile minimum requirement parking, we shouldn't necessarily apply that same strict logic to bicycle. We should have in some cases some bare minimum requirement. But those details are yet to be figured out. But any more thoughts at this point from Lindsay or Dan before we move on? Or Jonathan, from what you've heard so far?
I'll definitely share, you know, I'm a big supporter of eliminating car parking minimums. I think that's a great thing to do. And I certainly want to be sensitive to, you know, local concerns around, especially in your downtown, you know, the potential for long-term bike parking to make development more difficult. We definitely don't want to get in the way of any of that in the way that car parking minimums historically have. And I think there are potential ways to look at ratios that we're providing or possibly thinking about, you know, maybe this should apply as written in your downtown core. Maybe there's an adjustment that makes more sense so that developments that are happening there where space is more confined, you know, don't have to provide long-term bike parking or provide at a lower ratio, something along those lines. I think, you know, we have written into the ordinance, I think one of the last items, the TDM strategy talks about replacing car parking with bike parking. I think that's a great strategy. It does only work if you have car parking minimums on the books, right? As soon as you eliminate that, the requirement or the option to replace kind of becomes moot. But I think this is a really good discussion and I'm going to look forward to reviewing the staff comments in more detail.
I have another piece I'm curious about and I imagine this is probably one of the people who would find this a particularly popular idea. But I've always been a little startled at how low the parking costs are in Brownborough. And I wonder if there's an opportunity to raise parking costs to help subsidize bicycle infrastructure.
So.
Popular with me.
So that is the select board, it's in ordinance and I think there's been some discussion of the rates. Not necessarily what they're going to be, but there's some internal staff discussion about the rate. They should be up.
I mean, I like the idea of there being a direct relationship between two, right? That if people are driving, there's a cost associated with driving and parking and that some of that funding then would go to support the sort of infrastructure that supports people using other modalities. I think there's a really nice, you know, related connection there.
So right now there is a parking fund, which is its own utility. So the collections from that goes to the transportation center in the service office? Not necessarily bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure this way.
Member of the public, Maya, about what we're talking about?
Yeah. I'm not opposed to more bike parking or accommodation for bicycles, but you have to take into consideration people who are not physically able to ride a bike. And you have to make sure you have, you don't do things that impede other people's ability to have some, have mobility. I used to bike commute and I can't anymore because I have. I I used to bike commute, and I can't anymore because I have problems with my shoulders. I'm also seventy seven years old, and so talking about eliminating parking and raising parking costs and all that, you have to think about the impact it's going to have on people that can't bike.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, this isn't a university town, for sure, so.
No, it's not Portland, Oregon.
Yes, well, well heard.
To Eugene.
But Steve, or or I could just bring, I'd like to continue through the list because it also gets, I think, more substantial, especially with number four, but number three is speaking a bit to the staff recommendation about not including reference to documents that that we're not familiar with. I mean, we could be familiar with them, but they, I've never heard that that term evergreen clause, but I understand what it means. And I think what staff was getting at was that if the the bicycle parking guidelines made by the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals changes, then unless we're up on it all the time, then it's just referencing some other set of regulations and makes the our our land use regs not not clear, or there's levels of 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 depth that you have to keep going in order to find what the reg is actually requiring. So Jonathan, is that, do you think that that could be struck and replaced with actually what the requirements are, or are they much, you know, or the current bicycle parking guidelines by that association, or are they too?
Yeah. No, I I don't think you would lose anything by striking that. In fact, one of the things we wanted to address by writing this model ordinance was to have more of the regulation in the actual town development regulations. A lot of other municipalities do just reference the APVP bicycle parking guidelines. I think it results in a lot of non-conforming bike parking being installed, because as you said, you have to sort of go to a second document to find it. So we really sought to include all the important components of that document in the text of of the regulation, so I I think you'd be totally fine to to strike that.
Okay. Seems like an easy one to come to agreement on. All right, so now we're on to to number four, which is the staff recommendation of considering striking the amenity requirements for long-term parking. Consider striking the distinction between long and short-term bicycle parking. And from the memo and kind of what I agree with, my take was that it seems like kind of a big lift, a big ask right now in the context in Brattleboro. But I'll just leave it at that for my take on it, but do other commissioners or staff want to give a better summary? I understand.
I I think it would be maybe helpful to connect it to the conversation that this commission had about the open space requirements a couple months ago, and and I think the argument that we made in the memo here is virtually the same as that, which is to say that these things are nice things and we're not opposed to having them be around and having more of them perhaps, but that, yeah, establishing sort of an amenity floor, sort of, you know, going to that, but what I mean is that it's it it would require that everything that iteratively gets developed has to have this particular amenity when ideally we could we could hope that that is made possible through our design guidelines and and that maybe the new development that's aiming for that sort of market would choose to provide that amenity as an amenity rather than as a requirement, because I think that setting that amenity floor, when not in terms of necessarily having a few of the low-cost bike racks, I think I recall Jonathan mentioning a number, you know, in the in the low hundreds for the cost of the of the simple bike racks that are cited as being compliant, and that's really, you know, in the in the scale of a development. I think it's far more easy to have the conversation about the public benefit versus the costs of development trade-off, but when it comes to the razor-thin margins of things being able to part pencil out in in this town at the moment, and for some time historically, having fairly substantial costs associated with just being able to clear that threshold to actually be able to develop means that it's it's quite likely that a lot of things can't get built if they can't get enough money to clear that higher artificially set threshold for for things that have to be met to be able to develop. And that's, of course, also true with making a parking garage or a surface lot or other things that that might be required in the land use ordinance as much as it is for, say, locker rooms and showers and interior bike parking, secure area, but it's it's really worth considering that, you know, we might lose the ability to actually be able to permit types of of lower market apartment buildings that are affordable to to the people that need them. Or, you know, in the worst-case scenario, that nothing pencils out because it can't meet that requirement, we're in a situation where we've we've also got none of this that we want to see happen because nothing is being developed. So it's it can be sort of a a situation where if if the equilibrium there is is off, you're not going to get any of the thing that you're trying to create as a public amenity through development.
Yeah, well said, I think.
Can you clarify point number four? I'm not sure that I totally consider striking amenity requires. So you mean removing that column?
So I I think the larger argument that that is being made in in the memo is that we wouldn't frankly recommend having a minimum parking requirement or, you know, expanding any kind of minimum parking requirement at the moment. But, you know, in the situation where that were to be the case, you know, ideally it would not have the the distinction between long-term and short-term where there's additional quite expensive and and often spatially intensive, again, not in the same realm as as when we discuss car parking, but but still significant, and particularly, yes, just that not as nice as it is to have those facilities not having the requirements in table two be required.
Is that good?
Yeah.
I'd like to, if no other commissioners have something to add, I'd like to definitely get Jonathan's response to that, but also add maybe a prompt of, Jonathan, if you thought there was three absolutely, you know, really almost necessary, the use of land uses for long-term bike parking with or without the amenities as described, which would those be? And I thought, you know, transit facilities, which I didn't see in your list, might qualify for that. Like, I don't think the Amtrak that's going in downtown has long-term bike parking. What a what a missed opportunity. But, you know, people could bike from all over town and then either bike there and come back in a week and get there, you know, nicely blocked bike out of the weather and and away from highs. But yeah, so that's my prompt, but also everything else we've been saying is a you can respond to as well, please.
Yeah, thanks. I'll take the the last thing thing first on transit facilities. I absolutely agree with you. We, I have not generally seen transit facilities called out as a specific use, so I I don't know if they would be, you know, in the context of Brattleboro's land use regulations, considered industrial or an office, or if they would be considered a transit facility, but certainly if if they are considered transit facility, if that's a use that we could call out, I think it would certainly be worth providing short-term and long-term ratios for that Regarding amenities, just a couple notes there. So showers, changing facilities, locker rooms, those amenities only apply to specific uses, so so they do not, they are not required for parking garages, parking lots, and importantly, they are not required for residential uses. That's in C six. So if you're building a multi-unit apartment building, you know, you're not required to build a separate shower and changing facility for, you know, the residents there for the bike parking. The the idea with the amenities is really to acknowledge that, you know, riding a bicycle to work is is a physical thing, and for a lot of people, not being able to to wash off and and clean up and and feel like they're presentable after their commute is a real barrier to to bicycling for transportation. And so this is, you know, an attempt to facilitate more bicycling for transportation by addressing that issue. And it is intended for to really accompany larger-scale developments. That's why there there are no no facilities required for basically developments that have up to five long-term bicycle parking spaces. So if you were to look at an office development, for example, that amenities requirement would kick in at twenty-five thousand square feet. So it's a pretty pretty large development where you'd be starting to require that. Regarding long-term bike parking in in general, I do think it's it's really important, you know, the the scale of of space and cost required to install long-term bike parking is is just an absolute fraction of what's required for an equivalent number of car parking spaces. And I certainly hear hear the concern about, you know, development costs and want to be mindful of that. At the same time, I know a lot of those lower-income residents are reliant on bikes to get around, and, you know, not being able to store their bicycles securely or having to sort of enable them up the stairs into their apartment if they're on the second floor can be a real barrier, you know, if if they're trying to ride a cargo bike or an e-bike, the weight or the size of that bike can make it impossible to get it upstairs or into an elevator potentially. So there are some some real important cases where having that long-term bike parking makes it possible for a person to securely store their essential mode of transportation. So again, I think, you know, thinking about if if the ratios are right for Brattleboro, if there are maybe districts where the ratios should be adjusted, given the size of the lots or the scales of the developments happening, and then also keeping in mind that there there is a provision in here, you know, section G is all about waivers for bicycle parking requirements. That's really intended to be an opportunity to adjust for those cases where the development isn't going to be possible if if they have to follow this, you know, to the letter of the law. As far as three three types of facilities where I would say it's essential, I think multi-unit dwellings with five or more units, for that reason I was just discussing, I think offices and educational facilities would probably be the three.
From personal experience, my neighbor just purchased an e-bike, and the only reason they were able to purchase it was because they were able to find space to put it inside elsewhere, not at their dwelling, but someone else's, because there was absolutely no way they were going to be able to get it up the stairs to their, I mean, they can barely get it in and out of the ground level location that they did find. So I do think that that is pretty important, that there be accessible the storage.
Okay. It's definitely hard to to wordsmith things during a meeting, you know, to like get regulations and try to, you know, change one thing or that. So I think what we often do is, you know, share comments and perspectives and then ask staff to come up with something, you know, revised, and then, you know, if we want it revised, and and see that at another meeting and and, you know, talk about that. But we have a few more points maybe we should keep going through if they're in staff memo. Let me try to.
Yeah, I'd say five is is really reiterating something that we've already touched on, so we can we can skip over that, albeit there is a five B, maybe we can circle back to a might be an interesting way to have additional conversation. I think what we haven't necessarily touched on, that I hope was strongly enough emphasized in in the memo, is how much we appreciate the guidance on design and and location and other kinds of specifics on how ideal bike infrastructure should be provided. We have some language of that sort for automobile infrastructure, but we don't have very much at all for bike infrastructure, so I think we would be certainly happy to recommend taking up additional language on on that as regardless of the issue of of minimums, but certainly at expanding our existing section three thirteen on on parking and those sort of facilities to include far more information about what is actually an accept minimally acceptable provision for for bike parking, albeit I think we'd also like to to become more familiarized with just the the state of of the field on that to understand the recommendations on on the size of things as well as just what types of racks are are acceptable. I've certainly heard almost exclusively things that support what Jonathan's brought, but just to be sure that we cover all of our bases on that. So, yeah, certainly to to summarize, we would be happy to take up additional design and and location requirements on on bike parking that does get provided. And then the other piece that I think hasn't necessarily come up, but is related to the earlier conversation about making sure we get the public good of accessible, well-distributed bike parking, especially in in the downtown and other places that spaces at a premium, but that we'd like to see better access for facilities for alternative active transportation. The idea that, you know, we don't require parking whatsoever in the downtown at the moment. In fact, we make it incredibly difficult to propose providing any new spaces, and and that's for the the reason of there being such a premium on space. But we we have quite a lot of fairly underutilized space in the public realm downtown in the form of on-street and off-street car parking, and so there there could absolutely be a conversation, and I think we're even recommending that this be something that that gets discussed further, that that there could be a planning process to identify the demand for bike parking and the ideal locations for that, and then using what's essentially the front yard of of the downtown, which is particularly on-street bike park or on-street car parking, a few spaces of that being or or even, you know, a substantial number of those spaces being repurposed for a different public good that's perhaps more more beneficial to more people. Certainly, if we can fit, I think there's at least six spots for bikes on that parklet that's currently taking, well, not currently, but in the warmer months often takes up one space, so that's, you know, at least six hundred percent more compact, more efficient, so that certainly could be.
Yeah, thank you for bringing up that downtown part. I was trying to bring that up, too. I'd like to, I'd like to try to wrap this up, but I'd like to propose, because we're definitely bleeding over.
Definitely bleeding over into the time of the other agenda items, but I'd like to um. Get a sense from commissioners of three questions. Unless commissioners, after the hearing this one, do any differently. The first is, how do you feel about um? If we were to go down this route in general, um, making an exception for the downtown district. And maybe um putting the focus there more on the public entity, figuring out a good way to provide. The bicycle parking instead of putting those requirements on the intense, you know, really compacted and. Space at a premium, private spaces.
I think that that's probably reasonable.
Yeah, me too.
I think that downtown is probably one of the places we need bicycle parking most. I think the question is really just whether. We're expecting it to be developed in this as each new. You know, spot is developed sort of way, or whether we would be interested in having it. Not being generated in that format.
I think that's one of the reasons that I support what you're saying, Tom, because. The downtown area is already so developed that the likelihood of something coming up. Where they would be required to put in parking seems low to me. So it seems like something that might be better taken on by the town. Perhaps in concert with some properties in the area that might have streets.
And that's less under our power, right? That's not the land use regs per se. That's us maybe making a recommendation to. Staff and the select board, but I think that's a more um effectual way to do it. And as Steve said, there is. Space in the public realm to do this. Um, I don't know, Dan commented earlier that he has trouble with his microphone, so if, oh. Could Steve discuss point six about the town's potential liability? Let's get to that in a minute.
Sure.
Um, I also want to ask, um, well, actually, yeah, let's get to that now.
Uh, that one I feel like is a more minor point and more so something that I'd want to, uh, that I think would bear running by the town attorney, but. Specifically, but there's just a um. A portion in the proposed uh regulations that speaks to. Uh, security and protection from theft. Um, and I think that that uh possibly invites a liability onto the town. Uh, in insofar as it sort of suggests that. Any bike parking that gets developed in uh. Meeting these reg- uh regulations would therefore provide a a reasonable expectation. Uh, of safety to their person and their property from using that uh infrastructure.
Okay.
And uh, as as Maya said earlier, even though, you know, you can leave your car somewhere and maybe you. Ninety-nine percent of the time can expect that that is uh going to not. You know, uh, cause any issues. Sometimes unexpected events can happen and it would be unfortunate if uh if the town was liable for those things.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good point. Um, Sue, can you just leave the comment um bar open? Is that all right?
Yeah.
And um.
He said okay.
Great. And the other, uh, another question I have for commissioners is um. Um, echoing what Steve and how staff feel about the design and location aspects of these proposed standards. How do those sit with you all? Not the specifics, but in generally like, do you, do you like that? Contribution of Jonathan's and potentially putting them in our rights? That aspect, the the design details and the the location um aspects.
Yeah, they're nicer than a lot of what I'm. Contented with as a bicycle commuter, so they sound pretty idyllic to me.
Okay.
I think, I think they'd be pretty nice amenities.
But currently we have nothing, right? So somewhere, somewhere maybe in the middle or. Maybe the ideal, if that's what we choose down the line. But Lindsay?
Are you asking generally if I like the idea of what we're doing?
Yeah, because my next, my next question is going to be like, do we want bike parking minimums?
Yeah, I mean, I do think that it is something that we should consider, especially because we're talking about the the car parking. Minimums, so now seems like a good time to just be thinking about how we want people to be. Mobile in our area and what they need to be able to do that. And I would certainly say that bike parking is. Probably something that's been neglected at a lot of developments historically, and so it makes sense. Um, to be proactive and encouraging that. Especially if we're hoping to have developments that will be more affordable. Um, I think people ride bikes. I see them riding bikes, so.
And it's not mutually exclusive either. I don't think that there's. Everyone else saying that we're going to not have car parking. We will, of course, have car parking. I bike a lot. I drove today. It's cold out there. It's dark. It's very dark. But I think that it's making sure that bicycling is as easy, convenient, safe as it can be. Will enable people who are able to be biking to be biking more often. Um, one other little note, I just did a quick look to see how many racks it looks like in a typical parking spot, you can get four staple racks. So that's the potential for eight bicycles in what would be a car parking spot. And when those, when those corrals are um as close, you know, kind of towards the end of a block. It also provides better visibility than having a car parked there, so it can also be um a little bit of a. Um, a safety tool as well in terms of people not um. Not having corners be as dangerous.
That came up for us as well.
Yeah, Dan, feel free to um write something in there if you if you want to or can. Um. I'll just kind of go agreement with my fellow commissioners on that. Um, and then, how do I ask this? Oh, great. He wrote, to make a distinction, there is liability for the value of the bike and liability for town police. I'll suss this back to the other. Liability for town police to investigate the theft at the bike parking. It should be signage with message. To encourage anyone to report any theft posted as a warning. All right, so that can be um thought of when we're talking about that section in the future. Um, and then for the. I wish we just had unlimited time, but I want to try to write this up. For the um, the minimums, um. How do commissioners feel? I mean, we can get into the weeds a bit and say short term versus long term, but I think maybe um. For a future meeting, staff is gonna. You know, I'll be discussing with them and we'll incorporate the comments we've spoken about and their feedback. And we'll have a revised version. Jonathan will still be in the conversation, but how do commissioners feel about? The way our regs are now versus a proposal to add. Some bicycle parking minimums.
I'd rather have bicycle parking minimums than car parking minimums, so I would be curious to see what staff in collaboration with Jonathan would recommend would be the best ratios for Brattleboro.
Lindsay?
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Dan, I know it takes a while to write, faster to speak than to write things. You can't speak currently, so feel free to write a comment. And although I agree with the other commissioners who spoke. Um, I want to give, um. Yeah, Jonathan or Jonathan, do you have any closing thoughts? Um, but we'll see you again and speak in the interim.
Yeah, of course. I think I'm, I appreciate the care with which you all are approaching. This and not wanting to repeat the damages of car parking requirements and. I look forward to continuing to work with you all and and land at a regulation that's well suited to Brattleboro.
Okay, thank you. And before you go, um, Dan's comment is, I would want some sort of data to support the minimums, okay? And then an opportunity for the public, um, before we leave this agenda item with any comments on the topic. It's not a requirement. Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. Um, oh, but maybe you'd be interested in staying on for the next agenda item. Um, which hopefully we can run through a little quicker than the twenty minutes. Um, we have Colin Breton of the Wyndham Regional Commission. He's a transportation planner. And um, he's going to, um, well, through Colin, we, uh, staff and I were made aware, I think, of the Vermont Agency of Transportation's. Um, survey for a proposed um bicycle corridor along Route Five. Um, so this meeting, um, well, the requirement is that the planning commission chair of relevant towns, um. Fills out the survey, but I wanted to get um. The commission's feedback to help um write this well and staff's feedback and any members of the public. Um, but Colin, please give us some, a little concise presentation and any prompting you'd like.
Yes, no, I will try to uh keep this as short as possible. I think you, you know, touched on most of it, um, that, you know, the agency of transportation. Has created the survey really to just gauge interests from communities, you know, along the Route Five corridor or, you know, I think. Within the Connecticut River Valley on. Uh, the creation of a dedicated bicycle corridor, you know, running from the Massachusetts state line up to the border with Quebec. Um, this, I I have. You know, in all of these meetings, I've really been emphasizing that this is a. The very preliminary step. This is, um, the the legislature had authorized funding to do this survey. Really just to see if this is something the communities in the corridor are interested in. Um, and then once they have, you know, gathered sufficient responses, a decision will be made. Uh, about taking the next step, which, you know, they haven't. I I think Vtrans hasn't really, uh, you know, put out a lot of information about what exactly that would look like, but, you know, my bet would be. That if the response is positive, that the next step will be the creation of a corridor plan. Um, you know, over the next year or two, which will then inform, uh, you know, more concrete. Infrastructure decisions going forward into the future. Um, so as far as like. You know, what exactly is this going to look like? You know, where are they going to be making these improvements? What type of infrastructure are we talking about specifically? Um, I I don't think the state is not there yet. This is really just an initial step. Um, in what will become a longer process. Um, and just. I I think some, you know, relevant context is that this is, I I think more so than anything stemming from the success of the La Moya Valley Rail Trail. Um, and the Mississauga Valley Rail Trail in the northern part of the state, um, which have. You know, opened in the last few years, and I think the agency of transportation. Uh, has, you know, been very happy with the the results that they've seen up there and that they felt that they've been a, you know, a big driver of. You know, both increasing bicycle commuting for locals as well as bringing people up into those regions, um, you know, tourism, you know, recreation tourism, which is obviously a big, a big part. Of, you know, why people come to Vermont. Um, and they, I think there's a sense that they could replicate that. In the Connecticut River Valley, um, you know, if that's something that communities in the, in that corridor desire. Um, and then the only. Uh, the only other thing I think is, you know, especially relevant is just that, um, there is this, I think, larger regional network that we can potentially. Tap into in Southeastern Vermont. Um, I think the people are probably aware. Of the rail trails, you know, in New Hampshire that, you know, go from Hinsdale to Keene, um, and the conversations about the conversion of the existing. Bridges on one nineteen, once the new bridge is opened into a dedicated bicycle pedestrian corridor as well as. Um, I think Hinsdale, and I believe that Brattleboro has been been involved in those talks as well about the conversion of the Fort Hill. Rail, you know, the the existing rail bridge to the south, um, into a dedicated bicycle bridge. There's also been, um, the town of Northfield, Massachusetts has applied. To, um, for federal funding to convert. An abandoned rail bridge within Northfield over the Connecticut River called the Schnell Bridge into a dedicated rail bridge, which would become part. Of this larger Connecticut River byway, which exists in Western Massachusetts, which is. Uh, you know, a mix of, you know, places where there's dedicated bicycle infrastructure as well as just, you know, signage and on-road facilities that. Are, you know, intended to create this corridor throughout Western Massachusetts that this could potentially, you know, connect into in Vermont. Um, and then I I also think that there's, you know, some significant rail trails up in the upper valley. That, you know, would be a worthwhile connection. Um, and so. Uh, you know, yeah, there are some, you know, substantial regional, you know, connectivity. Uh, you know, the the potential for some, you know, you know, good regional connectivity, um, that, you know, Southeastern Vermont could tap into. So, you know, I'm happy to answer, you know, any questions or just, you know, hear your thoughts or, you know, however you like to use the time.
Well, looking through the survey, you know, it's, it's like you were saying, this is a very preliminary stage in the process and as such, the, you know, the questions are. You know, not something that one needs to really, um. They're pretty easy to answer as long as, you know, one has perspective and they're knowledgeable of of the, you know, the community's perspective. And, um, you know, accidents that have happened and the way the conditions currently are. But I wonder if it would be helpful, um, to put the survey up on the screen so we can. I mean, even though that's a big screen, I don't know if. Oh, yeah, I think so. I think it might help.
It does seem to, like, if we were going to do a survey to ask about bicycle parking, some of this, you know, a little bit of it gets at bicycle parking, but. People who are, you know, regular bicyclists in our community certainly would have additional thoughts. On what works for them and what doesn't based on, you know, where they're coming from and where they go.
Well, Sue, regarding this agenda item in the survey, you've, did you tell me that you you were in touch with? Or Colin was in touch with BCAT and friends of the West River Trail, so they're aware of the survey and.
Yeah, I did let them know that this was going to be discussed tonight. The survey is due, uh.
Oh, the.
November.
The thirteenth.
Thirteen, so it's.
The, um.
Vtrans, I believe, has extended the deadline to the seventeenth or the eighteenth. I'll have to double check on that.
Okay. And I see Arthur Davis as a member of the public. I think he may be on BCAT, but I'm not sure. And so i- in order for me to do the survey, you know, I certainly had my own ideas and. And the Bike Walk um action plan that we did has a lot of good content in there to pull from. Um, but. I think I'd just like to run through them and just hear people's comments if they have them, you know, run through some of the points. Um. Okay. How um, yep.
I have it up if you need it.
Okay, thanks. Um, let's go to the next page. I think that's where the first real question starts. How important is providing bicycle conditions on or along a route? That is highly adjacent to US five in your town or region? I guess I'm asking, I'm looking for, um, you know, yeses, nods, words from commissions and or no's. Um, from commissioners and members of the public.
I would say somewhat are very.
Somewhat very. Okay.
I see a lot of people using that in this town already.
I see nods. I wonder if, um, you know, certainly members of the public on Zoom can, um. Comments, um, but maybe we, that's a good opportunity to use those emojis that Zoom allows. There's thumbs up and thumbs down. But it doesn't matter too much because after this question, there's, there's ones that aren't just, can't be answered with yes or no anyway, so. Um, but anyway, with the way the town plan, you know, there's sections in the town plan that make it pretty clear that, you know, it's. Maybe in between somewhat important, very important, so, you know, I'll check one of those off, but I think I'm leaning towards very important. For the next one, how would you anticipate a bicycle corridor? On or along a route that is roughly adjacent to US five to be used in your town or region? Please cho- choose up to five responses. So there's about nine options there. Um. Does, um, people on Zoom and commissioners do some of those with what you know about? Being in Brattleboro and, you know, the community at large, some of those jump out at you as being the most true?
Well, I was gonna say the local and or regional transportation, and I was looking for an option that would represent the idea of like tourism. So perhaps people who do like long-distance bike riding and see those types of routes. I'm not really sure where that falls in these answers. It's. Um, but those are the two things that I would think of, so maybe that's other.
Okay.
Maybe exercise and paths or. Connection, connection with regional destinations with nearby communities.
Tom, um, Patrick Davis has his hand raised.
Oh, please, Arthur.
Sure, thanks for, uh, thanks for talking about this. Um, yeah, um, I think that, I mean, I think a lot of these, um. Uh. Uh, are are relevant both to me and and lots of other people I know. Um, but certainly, um, certainly local regional transportation, um, you know. Uh, going to, you know, employment, you know, other shopping. Um, but I I think there's a lot of uses, um, especially if it was not, um. You know, not super far away from Route Five. I think there would be a lot of, um. Um, I think there would be a lot of people who would be much more inclined to bike. Um, if they didn't have to ride on Route Five. And I know that there's, you know, other plans for Route Five. Uh, you know, specifically Putney Road in Brattleboro. Um, uh, in terms of the, of a Vtrans project that's hap- likely going to happen there. Um, but as someone who bikes on Route Five every day, uh, for work. Um, I I talked to a lot of people who are not super inclined to do that, uh, unless. uh, unless, unless there was a, you know, an improved, uh, or more, more dedicated bicycle infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, one thing that's kind of ambiguous to me is that in, in the question where it says a bicycle corridor on or along, you know, Route 5, there's actually a big difference there. Because along Route 5, there's tons of grocery stores and employment, restaurants. Adjacent to Route 5 could be the, the, um, the, the railroad along the river. And that wouldn't, since it's such so downhill, it wouldn't have many connections to Route 5. So people would be going on that mainly for long distance travel or in recreation, in my opinion.
Probably different uses.
So, you know, if you consider both of those two scenarios, I could just check off all of those, but, you know, I'll watch the record after, we have more questions, but I'll watch the reporting after and, um, you know, because I'm not gonna write everything down. People are saying that, it's too difficult, um, and try and pick the, the top ones, but. Um, the next question is, how do you rate present bicycling conditions on US 5 in your town or region?
Well, it sounds like Arthur would probably know better than me, but I know from driving by in my car, I always think, wow, those people are really hardy.
Yep.
And brave.
Right.
So I would say poor.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so this is, you know, from beyond exit one to beyond exit three, and, you know, you spoke to that, but I just wanted to be clear. And Lena?
I would say poor.
Right. I saw thumbs up or, or three from the public here. I would generally agree too. You know, I think the section of Putney Road though, um, from that's uphill of the Marina and until the rotaries is, is decent. But, um, you know, it's flat and it's, it's pretty visible and there's the lanes there. But besides that, you know, there's, there's some rough sections, um, in those space.
And the road isn't in very good condition, all the spots, which is definitely a hazard for non-bicycles.
But it's also not particularly walkable, which means that cars are not looking for cyclists or pedestrians. There, it's very auto-oriented.
Yeah. I don't know if Arthur's hand is still up from the previous or. Okay. Um, what factors currently discourage bicycling on US 5 in your town or region? We just spoke to that a bit.
Unsure of safe routes.
Unsure of safe routes.
Up to five, choose up to five, it says.
Yeah, choose up to five. See, I wouldn't have selected unsure of safe routes because I figured, oh, most people know that there aren't any. And I would, you know, I would have, I would have clicked off the, you know, selected the specifics like steep hills, um, you know, lack of connected facilities, deficient or unmaintained facilities.
I would say that one that's not applicable is the lack of bicycle shops. You have a permanent selection of bicycles.
Right. What about aggressive motorist behavior? No. I, I wouldn't select that because there's way worse places I've found for months, actually, pretty good in Paris. I mean, there's, you know, it happens, but.
Yeah. I think if aggressive is different than unaware, then I would say, I would say that people are,
Sorry, people are on their phones everywhere.
That people are not necessarily paying attention, but I wouldn't call them aggressive.
Yeah.
They are not actively pushing people off the road, I don't think.
I think that street crossings is another piece, especially when traffic's moving quickly. It can be really difficult on a bicycle to identify the best and safest way to move across traffic, especially if you're needing to make a turn.
Yeah.
We've certainly heard that on the Canal Street portion of Route 5 that is unsafe to cross of cyclists, pedestrians.
Canal Maple, yeah. Any other thoughts about with these multiple choice ones? Um, Arthur, please.
Great, uh, yeah, I, I just to go back to the, to the other thing, I, I would, I mean, I would say that the, 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 the bicycle conditions on Route 5, um, I think it really depends on, uh, you know, one's, um, experience, uh, with, with bicycling near cars. I think that for many people, it would be poor. I think for myself and lots of other people who I see out there all the time, I would say it's more fair. Um, but I, and I would, I do, I do think that I do encounter uh, potentially less, less than other locations or other places in the country. Uh, but there are definitely aggressive drivers and, and, um, definitely, um, uh, many unaware drivers.
Okay.
Um, I, I do think that, um, uh, there are also people who do create creative ways to get around. I know someone who, um, will like go down the West River Trail, um, and then come up uh, behind New Chapter on that like dirt path, um, to avoid going on parts of Putney Road. Um, so anyway, people, people do, do kind of creative things to try to make themselves feel safe. For me, you know, I have kind of, because I do it every day, I have ways of making it, um, uh, uh, of, of riding with cars, but, um, often cars don't, aren't really a fan of that, even though it's legal for me to do so.
I don't know if I have to read the chat comments now if they can, if it's just part of what I will look at later when I do the survey, if it's Dan's comments, but if it's something from him saying like that stuff.
So, Dan said, after you've done it once or twice, you know what to look for, but for a novice, any road is hazardous. And then Arthur just, uh,
Well, can we make sure that we save all the, the chat comments? I don't know if when those,
Dan also felt it was fair for the road conditions, uh, number one, very important, and all the above for the next one. Sorry. I've got these little windows open. I lost track of that.
We'll have to keep track of it. Remember the good old days when we all just sat around the table? Thinking about your town or region, are there specific destinations you feel should be highlighted and incorporated into the planning and development of a bicycle corridor adjacent to US Route 5?
Sounds like the bike plan would be helpful, if you have that.
I don't know if it quite answers the question, but, um, you know, there's been some effort to have a rail with trail. Uh, we don't seem to get anywhere with that when we've tried to have conversations with the railroad.
Right.
Um, so, you know, that section from the existing Hinsdale Bridges up to the West River, I don't know, wonder if that's worth calling out there.
Those two recent accidents probably don't gonna help that conversation, I guess so. Those are the vehicles.
Yeah, I think it is worth calling out. I mean, I'll, I'll say both things, things along that are actually on Route 5 and then things literally adjacent, you know, but not on it, like the railroad, because there's two, you know, the example Colin gave, the Lemoyle River Rail Trail, I think that's, you know, that's not right along a route, you know, state highway. It's more, you know, it's a rail trail, so it's more has, it's not as utilitarian as, um, as a corridor along a road would be. It's, you know, maybe some more scenic and recreational, but maybe also allows people to run their errands to some degree.
I don't know if there's a name if it is officially a park, but the little overlook area across from Whetstone Brewery, um, and near the Amtrak Station.
Depot Street.
When there are not as many cars, there will be a really lovely pause point. I like having picnics there even as is, but it'd be a lot more pleasant because there's not as much car traffic there.
Depot Street, yeah.
Um, thinking about your town or region, are there specific locations along US 5 that you observe significant vehicular traffic and would benefit from additional inquiry?
I don't understand that question.
Main Street.
Do they, yeah, do they need like areas of difficulty?
So just, I would just jump in and say in all honesty that I, I think pretty much the entire set of Route 5 in Brattleboro by Vermont standards has significant, I mean, this is going up the whole state. You're talking about towns in Northeast Canada that have, you know, 400 residents. I, I think that, I, I, you know, I think regardless of what you as a group answered to this question, then I'm sure that as part of this, this state is gonna come in and do quite a bit of uh, planning work in Brattleboro, just because it is a bigger, more densely populated community by Vermont standards. And, you know, Putney Road is super busy downtown, a super busy, you know, Canal Street. I, I think, you know, as far as Vermont goes, that there's a lot of vehicular traffic, that, you know, in Brattleboro across the entire set of Route 5.
Okay, thanks for that context. I don't know if I would have known to answer it, um, with that, of that context. Um, the next one is, are there specific locations that you consider particularly dangerous? I can really just pull from, you know, the walk bike action plans and the comments and my own experience, like particularly, there's been a lot of accidents on Canal Street and, um, and then there's been some on the, from the West River uphill coming back town, you know, towards downtown where the roads narrow and the telephone poles are in the street.
How do bikes navigate the road?
I'll show you sometime.
It's a roundabout.
Oh, we can call it a roundabout here, okay.
Yes, Arthur.
Oh, I, I just say, you know, I personally, and this is, this is purely just my personal feeling about the roundabout. I actually feel safer in the roundabout than I do almost anywhere else on Putney Road because cars are actually paying attention to what they're doing. On so much of Putney Road, people are just on their phones, you know, uh, and not, a lot of people are not really paying attention. And I feel like in the roundabout, people are actually paying attention to where they go. So I feel much more seen. Um, but I, I drive, I, you know, I ride right in the lane. If I'm going straight through, which I'm usually doing, I'm in the left lane.
So because the people in the cars are scared for themselves. It's okay, lots of good.
So then the last question is, um, thinking about your town or region, are there any specific locations along US 5 that you observe high volumes of bicycle and pedestrian activity downtown, I'd say? Others, just up to three locations.
Well, there's certainly a lot of pedestrian activity, I mean, really all the way up to the, even beyond the roundabout. I mean, I see people every day riding their bikes all the way up to basically the border with, what is it, Yummersden? I mean, there's a lot of act, I mean, I know that they're talking specifically about bicycles, but I can't really take the pedestrians out of this because I see a lot of people.
Oh, this question asks about pedestrians too.
I think Canal Street as well. I mean, there's all those destinations and neighborhoods.
Yeah, I mean, we could be really general, say Canal Street, Main Street, Putney Road.
Yeah, I really think it covers all of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, this also might be a place, uh, where, you know, Dan has talked about people going down towards Guilford um, in previous planning commission meetings too, so I could just think.
Right, right, right. Oh, right, we're looking. Okay, that might be a good one for that, you know, benefiting from additional inquiry, maybe, anyway. Okay, um, if there's nothing else on this, I'd like to move to the next agenda item.
Yeah, look at the Colin.
Yeah, we are, okay. Yeah, Colin, thank you very much for, um, for attending and giving the backgrounds and some, some feedback and context while we were going.
Yeah, you're very, you're very welcome.
Um, can you get back to us about the deadline? Send an email?
Yeah, I, um, it's, I do this, I'll have to double check. I think it's the seventeenth, but I will confirm that with Sue.
Okay, we'll go with that. Seventeen, thank you. Okay, moving on, um, to the joint meeting for Design Review Committee. Hello, welcome. So we're starting, um, 25 minutes late. Um, I guess we could give, we could, how about we vote on whether to extend the meeting up, oh. Well, well, so we'll make that, you won't be able to, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna say only the most necessary words.
I won't talk.
So, anyway, so, um, the Design Review Committee is here to present on, um, a proposal for demolition delay and to move forward the certified local government program. And the first step in that is that the town established a Historic Preservation Committee. They provided a couple of supporting documents and, you know, one could definitely get into the weeds and find others um, at the state CLG website where they speak about all the powers of the Historic Preservation Committee and, and more about the CLG program. And then also from last month, there was, um, the five or so supporting docs that staff, um, put together and called up from previous meetings to give some background, which we didn't, weren't able to spend too much time on last meeting for a similar reason of running late. But here's the Design Review Committee, and, um, do you all want to say some things about this? Before we give our questions and feedback and.
Um, we'll move on.
It's hard being on this side of the table.
Well, we have three seats here.
Yeah, I mean, sit up there, we could, could we bring some chairs over there at that table?
No, we can just sit here.
We can sit there.
And I'll stand, we can stand up and we talk. Um, I'll, I'll go first and just say that, um, the Historic Preservation Commission, the, the one that we're proposing to turn the Design Review Committee into is, um, I don't, I don't think it has anything to do with the Planning Commission given approval. It's more of a select board kind of thing.
I, yeah, I didn't know if we had to make a recommendation to them to make it happen. It would just be nice.
I don't know.
Oh.
Yeah, you, you could, that would be nice. Um, but we view this as just a first step toward becoming a certified, uh, local government because the certified local government regs require all kinds of things that we as a town, I don't think are prepared to do right now, like a staff person that would at least part-time work on, um, historic preservation issues. And so we view this as just a, just a first step. It's also kind of awkward, I think, to have a Design Review Committee of three people and two of us talking become a quorum. You know.
Makes it difficult.
It makes it difficult to work on things. I mean, we've had to call special work session meetings and things like that just so that we could talk. And, um, so we're proposing we go to five members. It's also, um, it's a select board issue, but it's also, it's a opportune time because the Charter Review Commission is gonna be looking at boards and commissions. And that's, um, something that, that the Charter Review Commission could also push.
So could this be added into the charter instead of going the ordinance route?
No, it would have to be an ordinance, but the Charter Review Commission could, um, list it as one of the, um, one of the commissions. If that makes sense.
I don't think you need an ordinance to establish the Historic Preservation Committee. You need an ordinance to
To be convinced.
CLG Certified Local Government.
Okay.
However, the place it intersects with the Planning Commission is the land use regulations, the Historic Resource Overlay District calls out the Design Review Committee and kind of sets it up that way. So there might be a tweak that needs to be done. I don't think that's a huge deal.
Well, that's true. I'd forgotten about that. It does talk about the Design Review Committee.
I, I, I don't think that's a huge deal, I think, but that's kind of an intersection with the Planning Commission for sure. The Select Board has the authority to establish the committees and set the numbers, so.
Yeah.
But.
So we have two things here, and it's moving, proposing to move along in the direction of the certified local government and the demolition delay. Um, maybe, um, before we speak to demo delay, you could speak to the, um, I mean, we've had this at previous past meetings about the benefits of CLG, um, like some states, some consultant support and grant funding, um.
And we, we, you become tied in with both the National Park Service, which runs the National Registry, as well as the Vermont Historic Preservation Group, and there's a possibility of, um, grant funding for projects. Um, there's also,
Is it money's good?
Yeah, money is good, yes.
But is there, um, is there some ways that you all envision, because I assume you all would like to be on the Historic Preservation Committee too? Oh, no? Okay. But for what you see, for what you envision, um, of the Historic Preservation Committee's work, what would it, what do you see it doing and how do you see it impacting Brattleboro beyond the current DRC role?
Well, I, I think we'd like to see, um, perhaps more local historic neighborhoods be designated. There are, I think it's interesting, for example, the Esti neighborhood is not, um, as a local historic district. South, parts of South Main Street, um, were built specifically for cotton mill housing. Some of, some of the housing, it's, it's, some of the historic districts are more, um, for their historic importance, not their architectural importance. But I think how they were built and what they look like has, has, there's a relationship between the historic necessity for them and, and how they, um, were, were built. I live in a house that was built for the cotton mill. And, um, it was built as a two-story, I mean, a two-family, kind of two small units, upper and lower. And there were a lot of houses along, um, in that South Main Street area that were built for that reason. And they're all, um, over a hundred years old now.
So currently with our four local historic districts, there's one set of regulations that apply to them, and they're, they're, they focus on architectural features, right? Form enassing. Do you envision that that same one, one set of, of standards that are architecturally focused would be applied to all districts going forward, even if they're not, um, arguably important for architectural reasons?
Well, what's, what's historic architectural aid changes?
Casita Drive now would be a perfect example of that. Cause that's sort of hitting that, that spot where it's been fifty years and there's a lot of mid-century modern houses in that area. So that's starting to come into, um, sort of the preservation standard. But not all buildings in those historic districts are contributing. I think a lot in Brattleboro's past, it's been sort of historic areas at risk of being razed. Sort of similar to like Scully Square in Boston, um, where you can easily wipe out the flavor of a neighborhood and put up a Butler Building or, or something. Not that our, I mean, our land use regulations are beautiful, so it's not like that could happen here. But it has happened in the past here. And I think those at-risk areas, um, you know, it, there's a fine line between wanting to preserve something and the architectural features in those areas. And the story that it tells about Brattleboro and how, how the place has progressed and the changes that were made and the reasons why the past happened. As Maya just mentioned, you know, the cotton mill housing, there's other places, you know, obviously Esteville. You could look at it in terms of that as well as, we have these really lovely Victorian neighborhoods. But there's also progress, you know. We can't just, you don't wanna just stagnate everything either. But there's, so it's a fine line between that. And unfortunately, you know, we need more housing. But the other thing is, we also need to preserve our past. So we'd like a few more neighborhoods, but, you know.
So, so you are thinking that all of the, um, you know, thinking more about that, that section in our historic resource overlay that cites the National Registration Standards. It's, it talks about, you know, like I'm saying, the architectural features and the form enassing. And it can be interpreted, you know, pretty, pretty broadly. It's generally doesn't, it's not really specific. But, so do you envision that that would be like the rubric?
Yeah, you would, we.
Or are there other sets of standards out there that would maybe apply to other districts that you envision? Like the Barrows Road?
Probably in the National Register standards.
For now.
For now.
Makes such a huge difference between other places, like how they handle their historic, uh, historic preservation. We were looking at Savannah, Georgia, Charlotte, North Carolina. What were some of the other ones? Those are the ones. Charleston. Cause of the way they, they mesh those two things together. So the National, um, uh.
Registry.
Yes, it has these standards that are pretty interesting. Um, so if you put an addition on your house, you don't want it to blend. You want it to sort of stand out and show that it's not historic and part of that building. But they always show those really, these really wonderful, um, examples of this mansard with a addition on it that's like a mansard addition. And it's really lovely, but not, not to what you'd want. And so it's, there's some really nice melding between some of the other cities have dealt with that are really interesting for historic preservation and allowing different massing and keep looking at Steve, cause we talk about apartments all the time and ADUs and that kind of thing.
Tom, if I could just remind too, that the planning commission writes the regulations. So they might have a recommendation that they would like to see more districts. But as these districts get adopted through the land use regulations, the planning commission can also say these standards aren't working for everywhere and, you know, we wanna look at them. Or they're not working at all and look.
That's a good point.
I wanna keep it on this before we move to demo delay. If there's any more to be said about the CLG and historic preservation committee for now.
I'm surprised we don't already have some.
Well, I think from, from my point of view, it opens up the money door. You know, plain and simple. If you wanna get funded for these things, you have to kind of do this.
And so if.
It, it will help home, homeowners in the district preserve the exterior of their house.
And that's one thing that's not, that they don't currently have access to. Like the National Park, um, services, like tax credits for rehabilitating in an approved way only applies to commercial units, right? I mean, commercial buildings.
You can get, there, there's, there are ways you can get some historic tax.
Even for single family owner off of that? Oh.
Yeah, um, it's, it's not the same as the commercial or, or the multifamily. But there are some ways you could, there, there are grants and other things that you can get. I don't know how much money there, it's in the pot right now, but, um, I know when I was the his, I was the historic preservation officer for the city of Boston for a while, for HUD-funded projects. And, um, we were able to get some money for individual homeowners who, because we wanted to preserve their houses.
That could be a good thing to incorporate as this process moves along, you know, and as the public is involved to be like, hey, as part of our work, look, we're already making, you know, these resources, um, really noticeable to you.
But it would certainly help with conversion, I think. You can get some money for some of the larger existing houses to become multifamily.
So to connect Sue's point about it's the planning commission that writes those rules about the historic resource overlay and such. But in hearing the historic preservation committee, um, uh, a goal with that would be to look at creating more local historic districts. The historic preservation committee would be doing the research and the discussion and then recommending it to the planning commission?
But yes.
Right.
Could be.
Oh, wait. Oh, no, cause we don't, we don't call them, we don't create them in the land use regs. We just reference them because, so the historic preservation committee would lead the, spearhead the application to the state and the feds for more historic, um, districts?
No, so they're.
Local districts.
Sorry, I mean, local districts, so ones that the town has decided, not, not state or national register districts.
Oh, so the four that we have aren't local historic districts?
No, they are all National Register.
Oh, so it's a whole new thing?
And so when we created the historic resource overlay, we said, okay, if you're in the National Register, then it's going to apply.
Okay. So the historic preservation committee may be creating local historic districts and creating your own internal rules and regulations with how to deal with them? Development in them?
No.
Who?
That would again be the planning commission.
Okay, so we maybe have to add a new section if any local.
Yeah, or we tweak, we tweak the way the existing section is.
And say, as well as local, okay.
Yeah, or we say, let's look at all our, let's look at our existing historic districts. Are they still what we want? Is it working? What other areas do we want to define and, and put in there?
I see.
And then. It gets a little tricky and I wanna be mindful of the.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not gonna delve, delve too deep into that yet.
We need a chairperson for the chairperson. Um, let's get into demo delay.
Okay, so we're calling it preservation order for marketing purposes.
I'm gonna share the screen if that's all right?
Yep, yep.
There's a nice graphic going on.
Thank you. That's all in the work. Yeah. I used to do this.
I like that format.
All right, so a lot of this I, um, I took from Amherst, Massachusetts. Um, Massachusetts has kind of robust rules around this already. And, um, it lets the towns kind of develop their own. And I liked, um, how Amherst had approached it. So the idea of this preservation order is not to stop demo entirely. It's just to give it a moment to say, hold on, let's see if we can do something else or we can support them in some other way. And the historic preservation committee that we're proposing here would be the ones to, who kind of look over this process. You can change the, thank you. So in, in this, um, kind of scheme, in this process flow, the demo permit application comes in and staff gets to look at it and say, if it's in the historic overlay district, then yes, um, we're gonna give it to the HPC. That's the historic preservation committee. If it's not, they can do what they would, would do with it anyway. In a lot of places, um, they don't have these historic overlay districts like we have. And they do it by age of building, age of structure. So anything over fifty years old, which would be pretty much the whole town here. Or a hundred years old, which we, you know.
Most of the town.
Most of the town. And, um, we thought that was probably too much. And we'd like to kind of, for now at least, um, hold it into the historic preservation areas or any other structure that is on one of the existing lists. So there's national, state and local lists for historic structures. And some of our structures are outside of the historic overlay districts. And so then it goes to the HPCA who says, is this an important or contributing structure? If it's not, then it can be demoed. If it is, then we would start to ask for documentation. And I kind of broke it into these two things, that we're not going to ask for all the documentation. Cause the documentation can, could be pretty elaborate or expensive to put together. And, you know, depending on how big the structure is and what you're doing, we don't want everybody who wants a demo in, in, uh, in a historic district overlay to have to do that for every shed or garage or whatever they wanna take down. So if it's an important structure, then they would have to do the documentation. The documentation might include, um, economic feasibility study, structural stuff, um, like that. The HPC would decide what it is that they need. And then the HPC looks it over and, you know, here's what the owner wants to do and why. And it kind of looks at all of the things that could happen. Some of that might be a demo with salvage or moving a structure or some sort of reconstruction or any number of things. And if, then, you know, we might actually say, go ahead and demo. And, um, we have one of those coming up soon. We'll have to do that for maybe. And if not, then we issue the preservation order. Typically, these go for twelve months, but I could see, um, if new information comes in, you know, uh, then go ahead and demo.
What do you mean this twelve months typically?
The, the preservation order says, no, you can't do a demo for twelve months. While we, the, the owner and the HPC looks at alternatives to demo. Other towns have had six months and they find that that's not long enough. Some of that might be looking for grant money to help out, and that can take some time. We anticipate anyway. You guys have anything?
Well, I, during that year, um, if a structure is, they, we have engineering information that it's gonna fall down, you know. We wouldn't hold the demo for a year. I mean, it would just, we just, an order would be issued.
But there'd be a chance to.
Salvage.
Salvage or document the architectural features that are noted in the register so that either we can do drawings or, um, photographs or whatever the, just to document the fact that this existed and it was here.
I think you chose an excellent town to get your regulations from, having grown up in Amherst and worked in their planning department. Um, and I've seen the historic preservation at work there. Sometimes it went really well and other times, despite their best efforts, it was puzzling how people could sometimes get away with certain things. It definitely requires a high degree of vigilance and involvement, I think, from both staff and, and commission or committee members to keep an eye on people, um. Yeah, some, some places, um, I have in my notes, there are some places where someone actually does a demo that's not permitted, which happens, it's happened here. What do you do then? Okay, so it's a fine, well, they're not paying, they're not keeping their property up. They're not gonna pay your fine. The other thing that gets done is, um, no other permits can be issued for that property for some amount of time.
Definitely, I think it's a good idea to do that in Vermont. We can't withhold permits based on a violation of something else in Vermont. Well, that's unfortunate, probably.
Right, well, I mean, you shoot yourself in the foot if you do it for too long, right? Cause you want it to be developed, but, um.
We, we also.
Some places do it for two years.
We also, before demolition, we'd like to see what kind of plans they have for redevelopment. And, um, mostly keeping the same kind of mass and setback and everything. If it's, particularly if it's in a historic district.
And if it had already fit in with the neighborhood, sometimes it might have been kind of an outlier. But if it matched the neighborhood that it was in, then the develop, redevelopment should as well.
I'll, I'll just say, I was a little bit nervous about this one because I, I do residential design work. And one of the projects that we took on in Western Mass was a building that was in really poor condition and had not been well preserved. And, um, we spent more time than we should have trying to figure out how to save it. And ultimately, what it would have taken to have preserved this building and done right by it would not have been, it just didn't pencil. Like it, it was not feasible for this homeowner to do what they needed to do in order to get this building back to a livable state. So we have unfortunately, a lot of buildings that not only maybe went up quickly, although they don't build it like they used to, um, but also haven't been maintained. And that, you know, we all know a lot of the reasons, you know, climatically and intergenerational, intergenerational poverty and all sorts of things that have impacted that. But it sounds to me like this is a really reasonable way to go about ensuring that we're paying attention to when demolition is happening, but also being practical about when something is simply not salvageable in a way that's. in a way that's reasonable, practical and safe.
Yeah, so existing regulations there are just kind of soft, you know. It doesn't really say much. But this, I think, would be a little bit stricter in that, you know, not preventing a demo per se, but they are looking for that economic feasibility.
And we can look into grants, maybe there could have been something.
Speaking of the current section in our regs that speaks to demo, demoing, there's a part that speaks to financial hardship. It gives.
That's about all it says.
It gives only three, three, what's that?
That's about all it says.
Yeah, it gives only three exceptions to, or allowances for demoing in it. It's if, you know, staff has deemed it or authority has deemed it a, a safety hazard. If there's going to be a clear benefit of community, of a redevelopment plan, you know, whatever that means, for community benefit. And yeah, whatever that means, if it's on someone's private property, it's, could be interpreted in very different ways. And then the other one is if it's financially infeasible to rehab it, right? Do you imagine incorporating anything like that?
Yes.
Yeah, financial.
Tom, to just clarify on that, it's, it's a lot more narrowly defined than financial hardship and it seems to almost have no way of actually being satisfied.
You're saying like, like legally or something?
The specific language that we have on that, it seems like, sort of like variances. Theoretically, you might be able to make a successful case, but it seems almost entirely impossible, especially considering that you could divest the property for some amounts of money. It, yeah, it's, it's quite difficult to meet the standard and I think that was on purpose. From the, I believe it comes from federal, spoiler play.
It'd be useful in our regs if sometimes it said, even though this seems like it has wide latitude for interpretation, actually, if, if the courts get involved and they've set precedent, there's almost no case where it applies. That'd be good to know.
I just wanted to flag one part of this that I would, that we definitely need to look into if you were interested and that is whether or not a historic preservation committee can have that authority in Vermont. So it's typically the Development Review Board, everybody else makes recommendations. But I have not dealt with a historic preservation committee, so it might be that it's somewhere in statute and.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't look into that and we could certainly.
Did Burlington have that?
Yeah, I think Burlington, I think Burlington, the Historic Preservation Commission has that.
Burlington has this neat thing too where they'll, if you can't make the changes or the, like if you can't fix the hole in the roof, they'll fix the hole in the roof for you up to a certain amount of money and then they put a lien on your house. But it gets it done. But it was pretty interesting. I mean, very, very, very different.
Yes, well.
Their charter may be substantially different as well.
Nora, do you have more points you want to present?
No, you can look over all that.
Right.
These are just things that I thought we should think about more deeply before we get into it.
I think you're definitely worried about needing more back in birth, especially if you start to have some of these powers. Like I said, you're going to need more eyes on things if nothing else.
You think it'll be easy to find two more people with the credentials in, in town? Because they have to have the certain, you know, specialist credentials. It's not like the Planning Commission.
We have credentials around here.
You do, yeah. We've got, we've got a stack commission.
You can have a certain number, if I read the.
Well, the majority needs to be.
The majority need to have, fill certain categories and then you can have interested citizens.
This seems doable.
That's, that's hard.
Okay.
So I think we just wanted to raise this with you and then get some feedback and we can.
I mean, as, so from, from my perspective, with the CLGN Historic Preservation Committee, right? That's not, there's not too much interface with the Planning Commission with that, except, you know, we were talking a little bit about local historic districts and how we may define that in the regs. But as far as creating those things, it seems like you guys are having a discussion with us about it just to trial it, engage interest before it moves up to the, the select board. But regarding demo delay, that seems totally within our regs, right? That, that would, or would that all be written into our regs? Yeah.
I would think so, yeah.
If we wanted that, yeah. And I, I do feel like our, our current demo section is, is lacking and kind of odd and awkward and deficient. So I feel like there should be a more spelled out process if, if we are to have that. And if we are to have historic districts and historic properties that the community presumably has already supported, then where are the, you know, the teeth behind that? However, as far as how much the community has supported those districts is a question that I have.
Well, the whole process of creating a historic district is a.
An open process.
It's not an easy one. I mean, you have to get buy-in from the neighbors and you have to discuss.
To get buy-in from the neighbors?
Yeah, the people who are going to be in the district.
It, it requires a certain.
That's for the National Register.
That's for the National Register, but you would do the same.
I thought I was suggesting that how in the, I was bringing, remember months ago I showed the Connecticut example and we were saying that in Vermont, there's no, there's no voting involved. It's not allowed.
Well, you could have meetings for sure. You could have meetings to gauge the, gauge that kind of, but you can't vote yourself out, no.
Or vote yourself in?
Or vote yourself. Because we've put it into the bylaws and, yeah.
Yeah, you, I mean, you wouldn't want to create a historic district where nobody wanted to be in it.
Sure. Right, our next step is just potentially seeing this stuff at the next meeting in the revised form, but.
Would you like us to do anything more, flesh anything out?
Put ordinances together?
I don't think I have anything in particular in mind. Again, I'm surprised that we don't have more about this already. So I'm definitely supportive of the idea of, of having more to, to give more delay or stopgap or protection.
Well, we can take your comments and move on another draft if you want.
I was just going to say, it sounds like you've already been looking into what other areas have done too and have really paid attention to what, what makes the most sense as you've gleaned those. So I think, you know, a revised version just based on the conversation today would be pretty neat.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Tom, I can present it.
Preservation, not demo.
Yes, preservation.
Oh, yeah, so the public comment period. John, Adrian, you don't have to speak.
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your comment. Your non-comment. Okay. All business is completed, we are adjourned. Good night.
It's only 8:05, it's not really 9:00.